Go ahead and call the meeting to order. Start with a roll call. He here, Lanterman?
Here.
Uh, Councilor Friedrich is not here. Do we know if she's coming?
She's not. Uh, Wendy?
Oh, that's good reason. Uh, Berenham?
I'm here.
Nichols?
Also here.
Perfect. And we will go right into the one and only item, the facility needs assessment today.
Uh, so Mayor and Council, uh, we're excited to open up the discussion tonight with y'all, but this, these are discussions that have been happening with staff and, and with our BKV team, Kraus Anderson, uh, in terms of understanding what we have and what we need, uh, in order to make important strategic decisions. And, uh, as I've been through these before, I do think this is a unique opportunity. Uh, other times I've been through this, uh, they have not done this and come to council at this stage. The council hasn't seen it until the process was done. And so I'm really grateful for the team for, for coming and touching base with you on this part. So before we button up to complete the process, gives us a chance to hear your thoughts on it so that they can be incorporated into the final product. And so I will introduce Mr. Michael Healy, who's our project manager from BKV, and I'll let him introduce the rest of his team, and we'll get started.
Yep.
I'm Kelly Naylor. I'm also with BKV and focused on the city hall.
Mike Phillips, Senior Project Manager with our government group, Kraus Anderson. We're alongside Mari.
Hi, Mari Sol. I'm a facility assessment manager for [inaudible].
Thank you.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
You can jump one more there. Um, so tonight we're going to give you an update on the facility condition assessment that Kraus Anderson put together, and then we also did a facility operational assessment, and that's kind of touching on the deficiencies in your facilities on the operation side. Uh, then we'll talk about the space needs assessments, and, uh, that gives us an idea of your future needs per size. And then master planning, how those space needs kind of work on, uh, both sites and, and building locations, and cost estimates for those master planning options, and then we'll talk about the next steps as we wrap up the study. Mari, I'll pass it over to you.
Okay, so a quick agenda, high level. Um, we're going to go through the executive summary, a really high level, um, thirty thousand foot level. Um, we'll talk about facility condition index and what that means. Um, we'll look at your overall ten-year deferred maintenance plan, um, kind of a criticality breakdown by facility, um, and then kind of an overview of each facility that we looked at and kind of those higher level items that we found. And then we'll talk about just the next steps and conclusions. So, next slide, Jay. All right, so we can, we actually added a few, um, facilities into our original scope, um, just because it was, they were there and they were right next door. Um, so we did five of your buildings, um, including City Hall, public safety here, um, your Public Works, um, your Parks, and your old Public Works facility, as well as the shooting range, which really is an outdoor facility. Um, you can see, if you want to go to the next slide there. Um, so I just want to talk about the facility condition index. This is a really important tool that we use in facility assessments and how we kind of grade facilities on health of a facility. Um, so this is developed by IFMA, so the International Facility Managers Association. Um, it is basically a quick health check on your facility based on deferred maintenance capital needs over a ten-year period. So you can see in the, in the far, well, not, well, the far right, you can see this color-coded, it's not showing up the right colors on the screen, but, um, so the FCI ratings is basically that ten-year deferred maintenance plan that we discovered through the assessment against a building replacement cost, so a like-for-like replacement. Um, so that's how you get that FCI, that facility condition index. So it's a percentage of the building replacement cost against that ten-year cost that we found. Um, so you can see across the board, um, City Hall, we're teetering at just under two million dollars that will, that you'll need over the next ten years. Um, Public Works is about two point six million over the next ten years. Um, and we can talk about, um, twenty, so you built that building in twenty thirteen. Um, twenty years is a big benchmark in any facility. Um, that's when you're going to see a lot of capital improvements needed, a lot of replacement of mechanical equipment, um, and you do have a lot of that there. So that's why, um, you'll see in the next couple, couple slides that there is a big chunk in that twenty thirty-three category of things that are going to come up. So, good roadmap for you, um, when it comes to that public works facility. Um, you can see Parks Maintenance Building. That building is, is in very rough condition. I don't think anybody who's been there is very surprised by that communication. Um, it is a nineteen seventy-four building, and it literally has not been touched at all from, you know, maybe some paint and a few maintenance items there, but otherwise it is, um, it's not ADA compliant, it's, it's pretty rough shape, but we'll get into that here in a minute.
I have a question for you on the, I assume it says present day replacement cost in middle column?
That's the cost, that's the cost, um, per square footage.
Okay.
Yeah, so that's, that's what we use as a baseline, based on Mike's, you know, current present day cost per square footage of that type of facility. Obviously, it fluctuates a lot in, in our current environment. We, you know, we try to keep a really close pulse on what that cost per square footage is, but that's how we get to that building replacement cost. Um, so we take that square footage, um, you know, times it by that square, that cost per square foot, and then we get that building replacement cost. So, yeah, awesome question. You're paying attention? I think it. All right, next slide, Jay. All right, so this is your ten-year maintenance plan here that we've come up with. Obviously, our plan is more than ten years, but we like to capture it in a ten-year period because it's easy to digest in a ten-year. Um, so you can see that, that blue bar there, twenty thirty-three, that's a big year for Public Works. There's a lot that needs to be done in that year. Um, so you can see that huge bar there. Um, the orange is all City Hall public safety, so you can see, you know, twenty, twenty-six, there's, you know, over half million dollars worth of, of needs here. So, and we'll get into that. So you can see kind of down the road, I won't, you know, read off every single thing there, but, you know, twenty thirty-four, there's quite a bit. I think that's more interiors, but we can get into that in the next slide. Next slide, Jay. All right, um, I like to have this in, in just so you can see where your dollars are going towards in that grand scheme of things when it's broken down by facility. So again, that Public Works is over half of what we found. Um, City Hall is, is quite a large chunk at almost two million dollars. You know, Parks is, is a small facility, so it doesn't really take up a lot of, um, costs there, but the two, as you are not surprised by, the City Hall and Public Works are going to be your biggest investments coming up in the next ten years here. Next slide, Jay. All right, so kind of getting into, um, site-specific breakdown. Um, so this is the City Hall public, public safety facility that we're sitting in. That FCI is at, you know, zero point two eight, so that's getting up there in the fair category, almost getting to the poor. Um, we'll talk about why that is. Um, you can see that HVAC pie, that very large orange there. There are a lot of challenges here with HVAC. Um, the building is very difficult for the, the team to manage in terms of heating and cooling. Um, there needs to be a rebalance of the system at a minimum to get it back to a baseline of the HVAC. So it's, it's back to where it was designed to be operating, and then, you know, it needs to go from there in terms of extra repairs, replacement of items. Um, it's definitely needing some extra heat pumps. It needs to be rezoned in terms of the thermostats and all the set point areas, um, as well as we would highly recommend installing a building automation system here. Um, it's, you know, for multiple reasons, obviously, from a savings aspect, from, you know, sustainability of, you know, not using, you know, energy when you're not needing to. Um, you're able to see trends in the facility in terms of the HVAC. So you can kind of see what it's doing, and you can see it remotely, um, so you won't have all these thermostats on the wall everywhere. So it'll give you a lot of data. Um, also exterior enclosure, a lot of windows, doors are going to come up for replacement. Um, there's some, you know, step-cracking on this west end of the building, that's a concern. Um, there's some separation in the sidewalk at that end of the building, can kind of fit my hand all the way down in there, so it was, it was kind of a concern there. Um, obviously, site work, you're going to continue to do maintenance on your parking lot, so you'll do, you know, seal coats, re-stripes, you know, even a mill and overlay will happen eventually here in the next ten years, so. Um, so those are kind of your big, your big chunks there. There are some, you know, other items in there that we'll talk about as we continue. So, next slide, Jay. Thank you. Um, so you can just see some examples of some concerning items here, so that step-cracking at the west that I talked about, that separation at the west as well. Um, multiple trip hazards around the building, nothing, you know, this is Minnesota, we have heaving, it's a common occurrence. Um, the exterior enclosure, you know, re-cocking of the windows is, is definitely going to help with energy savings cost-wise, um, you know, keeping this building nice and airtight. Um, you know, some poor, you know, doors, you know, typical things, nothing of huge consequence when it comes to the doors. Um, next slide. Um, the big, this is the biggest, I would focus more on this when we're talking about the biggest concerns here at this building, so fire protection. Um, right now you have detection, you do not have any suppression, which is, it's within code. However, when you have, you know, police department and you have evidence stored here, you have data racks that have valuable data on them, they're not protected. So if a fire were to break out here and it gets destroyed, it's kind of a risk, you know, so we did, you know, have that in the plan. It's not, it's not currently in the ten-year plan, but it is in the facility condition assessment with pricing. So, um, I did just want to call that out. Um, so HVAC, that's the big pie that we were talking about earlier. Um, garage ventilation is a huge, you know, concern. Um, you've got multiple, it's kind of a multi-use room, um, with a lot of different activities going on in it, so you just want to make sure, you know, it's properly ventilated for the users. Um, heat pumps, um, the heat pumps in this building are at the end of their useful life. They do need to be replaced. With that, you're going to need to add additional heat pumps to help with that heating and cooling issue that you're having across the entire facility. Um, and then the zoning, which I had mentioned earlier, so remapping of the zones, um, making sure that, you know, these units aren't fighting each other, um, because then there's dead banding and you're not getting the proper heating or cooling, um, because the units don't know they're battling each other essentially, so. Um, you know, some of the duct work will need to be, um, re, kind of remapped as well. Um, and then the HVAC controls, so, um, next slide. All right, and a quick, I'm not going to go through, um, Public Works, that I'm just going to keep this high level. Oh, I'm sorry.
If we're done with that, Billy, I have one follow-up question.
Absolutely.
So the, the cost estimates you have on slide twelve, where do those dollar values come from? Is that like a bottom estimate, this is what it would take to repair this? Is it based on square footage and it's sort of appropriated based on the age? What level of analysis went into that?
It's based on each individual asset. So every, every line item, like all the heat pumps, their individually costs, their, yeah, it's down to BTUs, CFMs, it's very down to that level of detail, so it's not a high level, it's, yeah.
So this is fairly reliable?
This is, yeah.
Okay. So, so this is also reflective of, and she's not showing this.
No.
Uh, we're, we're getting, uh, this amazing tool that is tracking each of our assets individually to include photos of where it is, serial number, all of that. They've put that together for us that allows us as an asset management tool going forward in order to do lifecycle management, and it gives us the projected replacement cost, projected maintenance costs. Uh, incredible value for us. That's, that's one of the big reasons why we, we, we chose them, was we, we recognized what an incredible tool that was going to be for us near-term, uh, and also an important decision-making tool, uh, for strategic decision-making.
And what core are you using for that service?
We, we developed it ourselves.
Awesome.
Yeah, and it's actually a Microsoft-based system. It's not proprietary, so if anybody knows how to do Excel, you're good to go, so.
They're giving it.
Yes, yeah, I mean, it's all your data.
Not given away.
No, we, we paid for it with our fee.
Yeah.
I wasn't born yet.
Yeah, there is a fee, but, you know.
Sounds like a cool deal.
It, it's, it's, as a previous facility manager, I wish I would have had it, so I'll just leave it at that. So, um, but, and there are, um, we do inflationary dollars, so year after year, so if you were to move any of this out of, you know, the current timeframe, it's going to add, you know, a four percent inflationary dollar amount onto it automatically. So we try to keep up with that inflation dollars to make sure that we're, you know, keeping on point with that, because it's, it's a thing and it's not going away.
So this is high level reflecting an incredible amount of minutia data?
Yes. Yes, it is. Thank you, Jerry. All right, so just, um, I'm not going to go over Public Works. I, I kind of hit on it pretty, um, pretty high level at earlier. There is going to be a lot coming up in the next ten years, so I just want you to, you to be prepared for that, um, you know, making sure the CIP is reflective of those needs ahead of time is going to help you, um, you know, substantially, so. So we can skip through.
Can I ask just a real quick question?
Sure.
You had in there building condition someplace? Am I right? Was that being built in twenty thirteen, I think it was?
Yes, so twenty thirty-three is going to be a big year for this facility, because a lot of mechanical equipment ages about.
Internal mechanical, those kind of things?
Yep.
Building should be pretty rock solid.
The building itself, yes, but it needs some tuck pointing, it needs some EFS repair, it needs, you know, just general, normal wear and tear stuff. But yeah, like, you know, your fire panel, twenty, you get about twenty years on a fire panel before you need to replace it. This does have analog service in it. We recommend, you know, getting that updated to, you know, a more up-to-date system.
Being as new a building as, as it is, the bones are good.
The bones are good.
Where this one, bones ain't good. Thank you.
Yeah, yeah, but, you know, facilities always need care, and that's part of, you know, just like homeownership, you continually have to update things, so otherwise it will bite you.
You know, that upper left-hand photo doesn't look as nice as the new water treatment plant.
Yeah, they're, they're definitely.
Just saying, Kevin.
Yeah.
Those are great pictures, thank you.
Yeah, there's way more. No, you're good. This is, this is good. So we'll just keep going through, um, because Public Works, it's just the same, twenty thirty-three. Um, the old Public Works, there's not really anything to talk about there. You guys replaced the roof recently in the siding there. Um, the parking lot is a question for you guys, if you want to just, you know, make it more of a gravel, um, parking lot, um, or mill and overlay, that is the biggest question there. You do have a trip hazard at the main door entry there that you can see. Um, that's really about it, and there's an electrical panel there that's original, so that probably should be replaced as a fire hazard situation. Um, but anyways, we'll keep going, and I know I'm, I need to boot scoot so you can hide.
On the Parks Building, if I'm jumping ahead, we just did that rough, right?
Not just, but we did. Or, or issue.
Yeah.
So again.
So the roof is not in there, you can see that.
Kind of big, kind of deal.
Yeah, so the interior is not ADA compliant at all. The bathrooms are very, very tight. Um, the lighting in there is really poor. Um, the doors are in really rough condition. I mean, it's, it's a really, it's, the building's in pretty rough shape, and there, there's definitely some efflorescence on that. I don't know what direct, this, this right-hand side, you could even see it in that photo there, how, how different colored it is. Um, there's definitely some moisture in that wall. Um, but yeah, it's, it's, the building is nineteen seventy-four and not much other than roof and painting's been done to it, so.
Done its job and that's something.
You've gotten your ROI is good. Um, so we could skip that.
You know what ROI means, Jerry?
So this.
I'm trying to wait, but I can't.
Yeah, we can, we can just keep it light in there, right? Um, so just kind of doing a summary here, we got about five point two five million dollars in needs over the next ten years over those facilities that we reviewed. This is a do-nothing plan. This is basically, you're just going to stay and continue to live in these facilities. So that's what that five point two five is. It doesn't address the space adequacy, that's going to be Mike's, Mike's next top conversation. So really it's about determining the next steps for this facility, um, determining the next steps for the Parks Maintenance Building, and then obviously being prepared for the upcoming Public Works facility and the maintenance and capital needs for that one. Any questions before I hand it over to Mike?
What else, Earl?
I'll hop up here with you. Um, so the next thing we wanted to cover, um, obviously we went through the conditions of the facilities, but we're also a big part of this is looking at any operational deficiencies. And, um, obviously the biggest one for the City Hall is simply out of space. And, um, we definitely saw that walking through the building. I think the, the staff entry vestibules is functioning as a storage space right now.
And a workspace.
And a workspace, yeah, multi, multipurpose.
Is that your office?
Not today.
Not yet.
Um, I think, I, I think in, in most facilities, we want to be able to create a nice secure perimeter between staff and, and public, and currently the, the welcome desk is kind of bifurcated from, from the City Hall, so I think there's, there's some, definitely some security concerns, um, and just some workflow concerns there. Um, acoustically, that was something we heard from the staff, that that is definitely a challenge in the open office area right now, because there's so many people working in, in that space. Um, storage, certainly a concern. Um, back to the security, um, the lack of ballistic protection in both of this room at the, the dais, as well as the, the welcome desk. Um, but the positive was, I think the feedback was on this, this space, that this actually, from a size standpoint, functioned pretty well for the, for the City Hall.
Next up, we'll talk about the police area, so police are, uh, they're out of staff space for the most part to grow the department. So the reception and record staff, they've, I think, stuffed maybe four people into that space, that's probably sized for two. And they've got issues now where monitors are facing the public window, so there's some CEGIS compliance issues there. Um, also having the public, uh, once they go through that main vestibule, the public are pretty much right in the main operations of the police department, which is not ideal, obviously, usually those are kind of separated, uh, and there's ballistic glass and so forth, so you can keep people where they need to be. And then locker rooms are drastically undersized and inadequate for the department. Uh, the department also has a single restroom that's shared with both anybody they're bringing in for, for booking or detaining, uh, for interviews, um, so that creates a little bit of safety risk and a, and a navigation issue when they're trying to bring people in and out and people are crossing paths there. Additionally, the, uh, the EOC slash roll call slash classroom is all kind of multipurpose, so there is some issues there if they're trying to hold a training event, and they're also doing a shift change, uh, they have to interrupt those, those items. Let me go to the next slide. And, uh, talking about their, uh, support spaces, so weapon cleaning right now is done in the garage, as well as storage for their fitness equipment and their defensive tactical supplies. All those things being stored in there, it's not the ideal space, and when, uh, their training equipment is stored in a garage, it's probably not being used every day, which would be ideal for them to be able to use it whenever they have time and continue their training. The weapon cleaning being in the garage, that doesn't have adequate, uh, OSHA pieces like eye wash, hand sink, and also it's lacking the proper ventilation for that space to get any lead particulate or the harmful chemicals out of the space. The same goes for the evidence area, the bottom-left picture there, that's a, it's a nice little workbench, but it's lacking a lot of the best practices, like you'd see eye wash and a hand sink again, and then proper ventilation, possibly a fume hood. So if they are bringing anything into the station and it is contaminated with, who knows what, it's not traveling throughout the entire, uh, office area. The garage then in general too, it's, you know, four, four stalls, I think. They've got a fleet of probably three times that, and most of the fleet is out in the parking lot, being exposed to the very, uh, you know, cold and hot climate that we have here, and that really wears down on the sense of electronics and the really expensive equipment in those squads. So I always recommend getting those indoors if possible. Good, next. Um, so the, Andrew from Ortel Archites did the planning for the Public Works side, he wasn't able to join here tonight, but, um, in general, the facility, you know, is in okay shape for being only a little over ten years old, but it is undersized a lot, and that's leading the department to have their operations kind of spread throughout, equipment spread throughout. So it's not very efficient, it's not ideal. Some of the spaces are being used for multiple things where ideally they would be, you know, purposely built and, uh, Jason sees and things like that can be improved. Jump next. So the facility needs assessment.
Can we go back, please, quick to the Public Works one? You know, you said undersized, I think we'd all agree with that. Um, I saw at one point a number that was a rough number of rightsizing it, you know what that roughly was?
I think that's like three slides up.
Okay.
Yeah, we've got the program on there.
All right, we're jumping.
No, it's me.
I might have to get close to the screen to be able to read these, these numbers, but this, this is the, um, the summary of space needs for both the police and City Hall, and we've got this broken out. Um, this, all this information was, was generated, we did, um, staff surveys, we did tours of all the spaces, um, we did, we did interviews, and then we worked with, um, the leadership team to, to refine this. Um, this reflects, you can see the first column is the, is the current space need, um, so that's, that's what we're projecting for, for staffing needs currently, and then we've got a ten-year and a twenty-year. And so you've got the, the PDs at, at the top, um, the City Hall's at the bottom. In between, there's police and City Hall shared spaces, so there is some efficiency in a shared facility. Those could be things like, um, public meeting rooms, restrooms, um, building support-type spaces. And, and, you know, when you, when you look at the detail of some of the, you know, where the, the square footage growth is from twenty twenty-five, we've got a, a gross projected need at about sixty-four thousand, jumps to eighty-six thousand at the twenty-year need, and it's, it's important to kind of look at the detail, and you can see where some of the, the, um, departmental spaces, patrol investigations, you guys are growing communities, that's where some of the, the growth is, is happening. See it in the City Hall, a bit of, um, a community development as, as another example. I think the greatest, um, driver of that jump is the fleet garage. I mean, Mike can, can you talk a little bit about that related to PD?
And with the, the study and the report that we put together, you'll get the full fifteen pages of program that has every staff position and space and everything listed for, for your reading enjoyment. Um, we tried to summarize it here. Um, for PD, yeah, there's, there's the, the growth is, is mostly growing through patrol. There's some, some admin and so forth, but when you grow patrol, you grow more squads, you grow some more lockers and that sort of stuff. Um, and then some detectives, uh, you know, through the years too, but, um, so that's how you're seeing the, the growth there. And then police also had a, a strong goal to provide training facilities in a, you know, a future, want, in a future, uh, station that they would want to operate in. Um, so we've got different training functions in there too that, uh, take up part of the, part of the square footage, and some of those training operational spaces could be spaces that are more of a regional base that other departments and local municipalities could have, could use, I'm sure, so we can jump to the next one. Uh, so fire station, we also did a conceptual fire station program, and we interviewed, uh, Hanover and Rogers and West Urban Fire Department chiefs, and kind of met and just talked about if, if, uh, City was to build a fire station at some point, maybe they still support you guys, but what would be the minimum for that station, and then also if that station did roll over to being a volunteer station or a, a staff station here, and, and, uh, what spaces would be required. So we have the current need, which has a little bit less apparatus-based space, assuming that some other apparatus and equipment is coming from other stations that are nearby, and then as you go twenty years out, that includes a full build-out of the, uh, five apparatus base. So that's about the twenty-four thousand square feet. And then in the master planning concepts we're going to share with you, all of these concepts are showing the twenty-year proposed need, because that's typically what we try to build towards, except for the Public Works is showing the current need. We'll get to that slide. So for the Public Works program, their current need right now is listed in that highlighted column to the left. And then we also projected out the five, ten, and twenty-year needs there. I think this missed the kind of overall subtotal at the bottom there, but, um, when you start to see the overlay, the master programming or master planning concepts, you'll see that the existing building is probably a fourth or less than the size of what the need is.
Say that again?
The, the existing Public Works facility, the building itself is, is drastically smaller than what the current need is.
And square footage-wise?
Square footage-wise. Yeah. I don't have that number up, Hannah, I'm just sorry.
I thought I saw that number, I can't remember what it was, but it seemed.
Looks like about two-hundred-and-thirty thousand?
It seemed tight, I mean.
Tight, it is.
Yeah, some of that, I think, potentially is yard space, too, I don't remember. I don't remember exactly how Andrew summed it up.
I don't know what current size, I apologize, but the five-year Public Works need was 113,000 square feet, the 20-year need was 179,000 square feet. And then I believe was the site acreage. I know in our estimate, we were assuming about eight, but I believe the number was closer to 11, 11 to 12 acres, if I recall correctly.
Yep, sounds right, 12 acres, yeah. So, if there are more Public Works questions, we can circle back on those and have Andrew address them.
Sound good, yeah. Not as much as the time for us to do the other stuff.
Yeah. So we can jump to the master planning here. So we looked at a couple of different sites for, and a couple of different options. We met with staff and kind of determined what the best approach was for master planning, whether there were separate City Hall and police, or combined police-fire, City Hall, all that kind of stuff. We landed on the options that we're sharing here tonight. So this is a site right down St. Therese, on the end of the road here. Really nice site, lays out really well for a combined facility. So this option that we're showing, the north kind of parking area is staff and PD operational, you know, parking and circulation, so that has a fence around it for secured parking there. And that building, kind of naturally using topography that's there, we can have a tuck under garage space, so all the fleet for the police can be under the building and protected from the weather. This is a two-story building, part of it's two-story, so you also get some nice presence along the road there for your civic facility. And then, the public parking, you know, is kind of shown on the south side there, and depending on how the rest of that southern civic campus or city center area develops, maybe that parking could be worked through, it could be more of a drive-through and connect with other stuff that's down there. This shows that the building fits as programmed for that 20-year need. There's also ample space for future addition or other site features, whether it's, you know, outdoor program space or whatever. It's a nice-sized site and worked well. Go to the next. This is just a zoomed-in picture. So this one is just north of the Heritage Park site. This is just using a piece of that available land, that's, or undeveloped land that's there right now. There's another strip kind of further north of that, but this is using kind of the higher land piece, avoiding some of the wetlands that snake through there. Same kind of concept, though, part of the building is two-story. We'd have a partial basement area there that would have the squad parking and some of the support spaces for PD that don't require the daylight. We'd have a secure parking area for City Hall staff and PD, and then, public parking off the north end there. Also, a really nice set with a visible frontage right on the road, it would give you a nice civic identity in the area, and I think it would tie in nice with the park features, too. Potentially, you could pull some trails around and connect that into the park area. And we looked at, if City Hall and the police were to vacate this site in a future, if a fire station was here, what that might look like. So, we did two options here, kind of pushing the fire station north-south on the site to see how it would work out. This was a preferred option here, evident closest to that kind of loop drive that's through there, and minimizing the amount of curb cuts along Highway 10. So this is showing that full fire station buildout with the two extra apparatus spaces on the north end and that little lighter red color. But this includes some of the bunk space, if you guys did have kind of an on-duty or a combination crew. It shows the public parking and an opportunity for kind of a front plaza area facing the main roadway. There's also, potentially, you can still keep that kind of memorial and garden space, too, in the back of the site and integrate that in with the design. Go to the next.
Are you familiar with some of the OSHA requirements that are being talked about for fire stations?
Yeah, as far as the hot and cold clean zone.
A whole bunch of them, yeah.
Yeah.
Does that take some of that into account?
Yep, this was planned with that, with the decon vestibules and compartmentalizing the station, so the apparatus spaces have adequate support spaces, like dedicated turnout gear areas and decon equipment areas, personnel decon spaces, and air locks between any living quarters and the apparatus space, all that kind of stuff is taken down.
The subject matter expert on their team, his name's Craig, he's actually in Pennsylvania, dozens and dozens of fire stations, former firefighter. And so, we talked in with each of the fire chiefs about their perspective, their concerns related with how they operate, as well as what they see for future needs, to include some of those OSHA requirements. So he's, he doesn't live here in Minnesota, but he's built lots of fire stations in Minnesota.
Yep, thank you. So, this is, next option there, this is just the same kind of thing, but showing it on the other end of the parcel. And we decided this one, you know, wasn't the best, because we're having public access off of the high-speed limit areas, and then also introducing a lot of curb cuts along Highway 10, which isn't ideal and also costly. So Public Works, this is a diagram of how that could expand on its current site. There are some site constraints to work through with the wetlands and stormwater treatment, but this could be a phased approach with kind of building the, out from the existing building and keeping parts of it in place. But there's a lot of little parts and pieces here that are hard to read in this diagram. It is achievable to build on this short-term for your current need, although there are limitations as you start to look out past 20 years. And I think further discussions that Kevin's kind of having with Andrew to plan for those. We'll skip over too much detail on that one for now.
Your turn.
I'm going to bring my computer up, just in case there's any more or further detailed questions, which I'm asking a lot through. Just quickly, before I jump into that, I was able to find, so current square footage between the old and new Public Works is approximately 35,000 square feet today.
Between our existing old and our...
Yep, the current Public Works is just shy of 31,000 square feet, and the current, well, I shouldn't say current, the old Public Works, or what's referred to as old Public Works, is about 4,000 square feet. So 31 and 4 puts you at about 35 today. And then again, I know we're not jumping, the expansion is TBD, because there was some changes between parties. Whoa, that's not me, right? There were some recent changes on Public Works, and so we're actually working through updating the budget to include a five- and 10-year, or, excuse me, five- and 20-year projection for Public Works, and we're in the process of updating those figures. So if we go back to the cost estimate piece, please, thank you. So based on the information that BKB just walked through, in terms of staff interviews and meeting with city leadership and fine-tuning those space programs at a concept level, and we're really even kind of pre-concept and master planning, we take a look at buckets of square footage and apply a standard unit price that we see. So based on the numbers that you see up here for City Hall and police, we're taking a look at, you know, three to four projects that we've done in the past, I would say, one to five years, bringing those costs forward to today, and then applying that to your programmatic square footage. And so that brings us to the estimates that you see. The construction costs, those are the hard costs, the individual subcontracts that you'd expect to enter into, the soft costs, for those that may not be familiar, those are things like design fees, contract management fees, utilities, furnitures, fixture equipment, so desks, things to kind of fulfill the completed space. So, again, for both City Hall, police, that is the full 20-year need, as is the, just double-checking that number quick. I think that one also is the full...
Yeah, the fire station should be the full one as well.
Yep, so that is, that is the full 20-year need, which does include the full buildout of the apparatus bay that Mike referenced previously. And then, again, the Public Works numbers will be updated shortly. Any questions on costs or how we calculate those costs?
So I have one on City Hall police area as proposed. It looks like it's a $5,000 square foot for that complex. About 30% of the square footage is fleet garage. Does that cost $5,000 square foot, or is that lower, and other parts of that building are considerably higher, so we end up at the $5,000?
Correct. That is, it's an aggregate of the individual components of that space. So, for example, let me quickly jump into... The short answer to your question is, we look at different buckets of space within. So it's not just, like, the fleet garage, the fleet garage, for example, isn't 400, let's just say it's $450 on average a square foot. The fleet garage, realistically, is about $150 to $175 a square foot, and we apply that rate times the fleet garage space, and then the building would be higher than that. So that net that you see is an aggregate over that entire space.
Correct.
Does that answer your question?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And I can certainly go deeper into the weeds on that if needed, but...
It'd be good to know the cost of the fleet storage, and what savings could be achieved by adopting alternatives, like take-home squad cars or surface parking. I'm concerned a little bit that the cost of the storage might be more than the cost of the vehicles, let alone the incremental advantage in the turnover time of the vehicles.
So, to speak into that a little bit, Councilmember Nichols and I have talked about this, and we are exploring alternatives for the future in order to reduce the amount of permanent storage that we need. We don't have those solutions yet, but we're discussing them. But if that were, if that were a hard line or a concern, we could set a not-to-exceed storage, and then we can come up with alternatives to ensure that we're... So, you saw a big jump from the 10-year plan to the 20-year plan because of the volume of the fleet, and how that's going to grow. We definitely need to take that into consideration. So we don't want to build a fleet garage for what we have now, because that's what we did with our Public Works building, and we didn't build it as big as we needed it at the time. We need to take into consideration what our future needs are going to be, or understand that as soon as we build it, we're going to be planning for an upgrade or an expansion.
Any additional questions? Thank you.
Last slide is just quick steps, right?
Yeah. So, we're hoping in the next couple of weeks here, just confirm the master planning approach that we shared with you today, and kind of get the study finalized and wrapped up. So we're working through a development plan with staff to identify kind of how phasing would work and schedule-wise, so we can make sure the cost estimates reflect potentially years that construction and development might happen. And then we'll be finalizing the entire document and putting it together and sharing it with city and staff. And then I believe we're potentially going to come back and meet with the council one more time to present the final document. So, that's kind of the plan here, wrapping up in the next few weeks.
If I could, so, a couple of things that would be helpful for us, just to clarify, that I would say, they kind of ended up as assumptions based upon the experts' guidance, but we need to confirm that this is the direction council wants us to go. And so, one example would be, regardless of where the site is, because of the reality after our fire services conversation, we don't presently have the partnerships in order to move into a building at the time of construction right now. The presumption that they were operating with was one separate building, one of the things I learned from this process and talking to the experts, is active space with people and big trucks don't work really well together. And so, they were making it really clear that having a separate fire station is the best practice, especially if we're trying to put it in a space where there's going to be high pedestrian traffic area. And so, one of the things that I wanted to clarify is, it may not be the site, but is that a safe presumption from council, having, not having? I was operating when we first started conversations that we would have an all-inclusive everything on the campus. And I was actually resistant to staff, to their staff, when they're saying, hey, no, it actually is best practice to have the fire station separate. And so I want to do an azimuth check on that, to see, is that a direction? Because that's kind of where they've been operating, based on their experience and their understanding. I just want to clarify how council thinks about that, because it would be a huge change for us.
I think that makes sense, and also, if we were to look at it being on that, this site, and City Hall being at one of the sites, look at this down the road, not that far also. It's far enough to prevent some of the issues, but plausible.
I've been saying this all along, one campus for all of them. I did not think that was a good idea. Execute on City Hall and police, and I think you and I've had that conversation, Jay, sewer and water is going to cost this, add cost if it goes out by the parking lot, or by the park and stuff. We've got it all there, we've got all of the utilities here for those three departments. And then, to talk about Public Works, where you guys were saying, we have eight acres now and probably need 11 to get 20 years out, am I hearing all of that right?
Yeah, and I don't know on current acres, I can double-check that.
I think that's above...
I've heard between 11 and 12, I believe, is the number.
Yeah, the wetlands and everything that are out there.
Correct, correct.
Again, the bones are good, it's a decent building, but, and my issue with Public Works is, I wish it would have been more centralized than clear out on the edge of town. Otherwise, it's serving its purpose, it's doing well, but that's it. So my thoughts are, phase one is City Hall, police.
So just to clarify, the fire department being separate lines?
Yeah, yep.
Is there any other impact on the fire department?
I'm fine with the fire department being separate. I struggle with failing to utilize this building in the future plan. I'm knocking it down to put in something else at the site. I feel like there might be value in finding another way to repurpose it, either as, you know, a phase expansion for the public safety area, or does some of the City Hall functionality maybe work here, so we can continue to use this existing footprint with the updates that we talked about, as a way to defer the $700 square foot construction we would expect in the new campus location, or that kind of office area?
And my argument to that is, this building is inadequate at best to stay standing.
Put a lot of money into the building to make it serviceable.
Yeah.
So I wanted to come back for them for some of the assumptions. So the fire, Councilmember Lachlan, do you have any feedback to come up from there?
I would support separate facilities.
Okay. So there's clarification. That was an important assumption, because it would mess up a lot of decision-making that's been happening. And then, to get back to Councilmember Feringhams' comment, as we went in, we started, asked them, if you recall, to look at really multiple locations. This site that they're looking at was included in the larger site, but this actually wasn't a focus of the discussion when we first met and started conversations. What triggered looking at other sites, like Councilmember Feringhams was saying, was, we recognize that the cost of pulling the trunk line sewer and water to the location, and that would either be on 116, which they affectionately call the alien property, because if you look at it, it looks like an alien.
That's pretty cool.
So just the water, the watershed around it, it looks like an alien. That property, north of us on 116, and the former Rockford property adjacent to Heritage Park, both of those would have significant infrastructure costs, both the trunk line sewer and the required turn lanes. And as staff was ruminating on that, it came up, oh, this is something that we had never talked about. And then, the planets started to align really quickly. Trunk line's already there, no sewer required, it's already called City Center Drive. And there's been some tremendous investments already in terms of beautification, lights, future flower baskets, and so being able to capitalize on that investment made a lot of sense. So I just wanted those who are watching and watch this in the future to understand, why did this pop up? It was out of a stewardship question. How we can get the most bang for the buck, and how can we leverage investments that we've already been made? Another thing that is compelling is the city center, in terms of our comp plan, is this and to the south. This communicates pretty strongly for future development, that the city is all in, that this is city center. If this becomes our center of operations, that becomes compelling for future development, as opposed to some of the other sites, really pulls their center of operations away. It becomes the center of gravity for the community. So that was some of the reasoning behind how we landed here. A couple of things that I wanted to hear were, one of the concerns I had is, this is a heavily tree area, and so, in my cursory look at it, it's attractive trees. So we actually had StanTech go and do an inventory and assess the trees. I'm sad to report that there are some beautiful trees there. I'm sad to report that there are some beautiful trees there, but they are not high-quality trees. What that means is like, some of the most beautiful trees are at the end of their life cycle. There's a beautiful 24-foot sugar maple that is dead, it's in the process of dying. The biggest tree that they had, I think, is a cottonwood that they identified, which isn't a high-quality tree. And then some of the other trees, but there's an opportunity for us, in order to maintain the spirit that we developed this, to protect and preserve some of the trees around there, so that we don't just clear-cut it if necessary. But I was hoping that we find some unicorn trees that we could build around, and they don't exist on this site. Another thing that's unique about it, and it's not evident from the pictures, is the topography. This is a very high point. Some advantages to this, when we go to build on it, when we go to do a tuck-under garage, that's going to help us a little bit in terms of costs, so that's an advantage to us. And also the present stormwater collection, just the way that the water flows already off the site because of that, it makes it very easy to put stormwater collection just to the east of that. So there's some natural realities of this site that make this the easiest of the three of the sites that we looked at thus far. So that's why they looked at this. Where it landed on the site, the reason it's not coming in right across from St. Therese is because there'd be some implications on how it would disrupt the road and some other stuff. What's really great is you can come in straight into our parking lot. So the way that it's designed right now, it lends itself really well for us to activate this site. Some of the other things that we have been talking about is impact of flow, how do we get presently protect our employees from some of the things that are just happening in the world? And this was attractive, that it allows us to create a staff entrance separate from where everybody else is coming in. That can get awkward sometimes when you've had a very hard conversation with somebody, some of you have experienced this, and then now you get to walk out to the parking lot together. And so when council comes, they can park in the back and not have to do that. So from a public safety perspective, there's some help with this. I think those are all the... Staff, are there any other things I wanted to?
I just want to quickly tell a really minor, but I think another advantage of this site compared to the other sites that had county roads behind it, just because of the city street, we're able to have full access points, two full access points, whereas the other ones would be limited to one and maybe a public safety access, so.
Oh yeah, because we control the access.
Exactly.
That becomes important as we look at redundancy for access and things that we've learned in site security from, you know, demonstration. So as we lay out, making sure that we have designated spaces, if there is public demonstration, where that happens without disrupting the safety incomings and going to staff. So I think it does give us a little bit more flexibility with how we can access and interface with our... And I think also, it's encouraging that it's walkable to the downtown as it develops. So when we talk about, you know, as we look at our development plan and how things are going, some of our people in town who have the least access to vehicles, eventually as our downtown grid is built out, it's actually walkable with some of those, our other walkable spaces and our less mobile community members.
The thing I was most excited about is dollar-for-dollar, whenever we're investing, instead of land acquisition, which would be anywhere between $6 and $10 million where the market's going, we already own the land. So right away, we're starting off with $10 million saved. And then when you looked at the $3 to $5 million for the turn lanes and the trunk line sewer, so we're between $10 and $15 million because of this site. So that the money that we are investing, every dollar is going to improve either the quality of the customer service that we're providing, the public safety perspectives of both our council and our staff, or just the efficiency and effectiveness of our operations.
Frankly, I think it's a little bit more than that, given the numbers we were hearing when we were exploring other properties. I don't remember hearing 10 for a property that worked different from here, and more than that.
Fair. I was trying to be conservative.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
I got just one question. Kevin, are you being, feel like you're being left out when we talk public, or City Hall and Police and Public Works is out there on the edge of town, or?
I mean, I think all of us, I think there's competing interests in the city, so I don't think that we, I think we have to, I mean, we have to solve this problem, but we can't forget about Public Works. I think there has to be some investment in Public Works in order to sustain and solving that, you know, that problem is still out there, so I...
As I said...
I don't feel like I'm being left out, but I do want to message that there is problems that we have to solve with Public Works as well.
As I said, the logistics, is it an issue being the furthest way from the most developed part of town?
Yeah, it's a logistical issue, so I mean, at some point, it would be nice to have some other facility centralized around the East Metro, and then, you know...
East Metro or East City?
East Cork, East Cork or in the...
East Cork, gotcha.
But Jim Woodbury, if you want.
We ain't going to support the metro side of things. Take care of Corcoran first, yep. No, I just, I wanted to make sure.
But yeah, I think there would be benefit to finding space, central or eastern, near the urban areas, nearer the density of them, and the street density is going to be there from operations, our parks are there from parks' operations perspective.
The old...
Utilities are all on the east side, and...
The old Public Works is how big, that property?
I think it's eight...
Hardly anything, right?
Oh, the old Public Works?
The old Public Works.
Yeah, that's...
The square footage, it's like 3,000.
No, we're talking properties.
3,763.
And it's a big ravine, and it's...
Yeah, that's, you can't really expand that.
You can't do anything there.
You might be able to do some extra storage or fencing or add storage, but I don't think you're operating really staff out of that facility.
Yeah, some of the things we've been talking about, also, you know, this covers the new City Hall site, covers a lot of things, but we're still going to need off-site storage.
Yep.
And so we've talked about how we can leverage that, put a fence around it in order to protect our assets, and whether that's gravel. So I think that's going to continue to be an important capability for us. We need to do some things, but that's not going to require a heavy lift in terms of investment in order to do that.
Yeah, we just got to, we got to stay tight and close to Public Works and the needs and stuff, so this is exciting.
Yeah, sure.
Not sure how we're going to do it, but it's exciting.
Short answer is, we can't ignore Public Works for five years.
Please, yes.
The last thing that I say, Mayor and Council, is, you know, this is, this is way up here. This is our opportunity to get your feedback, hear what your concerns are, share what our assumptions were, and correct any of those if necessary before we get to the final product. And then even with the final product, that's the launch point. That's the launch point for the deliberate planning. So we've identified, here's what the 20-year requirement would be, that doesn't mean that that's what we build. But we also need to recognize that it's never going to be cheaper than today. So to get as much as we can in order to think strategically for the future. And we already, tonight, the mayor and Kevin and I were riffing on some things about some potential opportunities that we might be able to be even more strategic and bring some things to the table. So that's kind of the way that we operate here, you know, coming back to the Public Works building, Councilmember Berenkamp, like we just added significant square footage through collaborative partnership and at a lower cost.
Done really well on that. Good job.
And self-performing a lot of things, so that's the spirit, like we do quality work, but we're also good stewards of every buck that we get. And so while they're giving us the best information from the market, we are also, as staff, going to do our best to make sure that what we're doing is going to provide the greatest value to the community for the long range. So any buck that we spend is intended. And so to address Councilmember Nichols' concern about this, I appreciate that. I came in here and I thought, man, this could potentially be our post office. What if Corcoran had a post office? It's set up really cool. That might be a use, until I found out, yeah, the post office isn't going to want us to do that. I explored it.
Bottom of a bus stop.
Yeah, and I thought about, oh, a library, that would be fantastic. And I talked with the county about the library. They're not as enthusiastic about opening lots of new libraries as I thought they might be. So even as I was trying to figure out, how can we preserve and leverage this space in ways that would make sense, I'm finding that, yeah, the interest for some things isn't going to work. And so if we can't do it, what's the best and highest use for what we've got? I do have to agree with Councilmember Berenkamp, that like, my office is the coldest and hottest building, or hottest space in this building, and I don't want to spend what was the, I think it was almost a million bucks, $890,000 to revamp the HVAC system for something that already isn't meeting the needs of the community.
Well, the HVAC was revamped before we turned that from a community room into a workspace, right? I remember the timing on all of that.
I would assume the internet would fix those kinds of issues. Is that the intent of that, or is it to maintain current dysfunction?
No, it is to, there's kind of a multi-step process. I mean, the first would be, you need to recommission the current, the current system, so get it back to the standard that it was designed for, and then start to kind of study what the system is doing. Additionally, you know, adding more heat pumps, replacing the existing ones because they're at the end of its useful life, you know, doing, changing up the thermostats and all the, you know, sensors, because they're fighting each other, because they're sometimes in the same, you know, area where it's just not working properly. So, and then, you know, duct work, the layout of the duct work isn't proper. I do have to, you know, interject with that, is, that's a significant amount of work in a building. I mean, you have to tear open ceiling, I mean...
So I was going to say, what we had the advantage when we did, and advantage is that maybe an overuse, was we weren't using that side of the building. Right now, in order for us to even do that work, we'd have to shut City Hall down, but we don't have anywhere to go.
Right.
It would be a very hard...
We can't even rent a space because there's no rental spaces, so we'd be renting spaces in Maple Grove.
Go to garages too.
No, don't get it.
I got room in my barn, if you don't mind bats and other things. They only come on, they only come on at night.
So I wanted to raise a point on context, too. So the Wazetta School District is looking at building two elementary schools and a middle school, going out for bonding between $600 million and a billion dollars next year. So as we're looking at major capital improvements, there's probably going to be a lot of additional construction going on in the local area. So we may want to try to get in ahead of that as much as is possible and available to us. The other thing to be aware of is the tax implications of that bonding will be large for a significant portion of Corcoran, if it's approved. And when you stack whatever this will do to our bonding on top of that...
Oh, the school, you're saying?
Yeah, the school bonding.
The school bonding will affect...
Yeah, a lot of people.
A lot of people, not a lot of area.
Yeah.
But we should be aware of that as we're making our decisions. And to the degree that we can sharpen our pencils and look at, how do we maximize value in what we're planning to do? I'm sure taxpayers will appreciate anything that we can do there.
It's not only, it's not just Wazetta, the Rogers School District, Buffalo School District, they're all...
Rogers just built a new fire station.
All of them, you know.
And we're not building a $600 million building.
Thank God.
Nor would we.
Well, when Kevin gets his way, it could...
We can pave all of our roads for Corcoran for less than they're building an elementary.
An elementary school, anybody want to guess what they're estimating elementary school would cost?
Just the elementary?
Probably one of the two elementary.
That's what they already own?
300 million?
280.
100 million for elementary school, they're doing two of them.
Okay.
200 million plus for the middle school, and then they are adding kitchens to all the elementary schools that don't have them.
They need to renovate the old elementary.
And they're renovating from those, and they're updating the high school, adding square footage to the high school. So there's going to be a lot of construction.
The Oprah Winfrey of kitchens over there?
$40 million in kitchen.
That's a lunch kit.
That's by no means a shore, but it is going on in the community that we need to be aware of.
And I would also say, unlike the Wazetta School District, this has been in the flunked or financial plan of the city for a very, very long time, been talking with the city about it for at least 10 years. And that's part of the reason of the timing of this, is because we've been talking about it, and we're way past, ideally, we probably should have done this in 2018, but instead the decision was made to take the community room and convert it.
Yep.
What are the odds of outside bonding something from the state or...
We were just talking about that. We will find every buck we can.
Yeah, we'll go after it as much as we can with both the state and federal.
And when you win the lottery, we don't have to worry about it.
How to find the win.
We were encouraged when they came to the ribbon cutting at the water treatment facility, they all encouraged us to chase those dollars, and they would be supportive, so...
And as Jay mentioned, we had some creative ideas just for this meeting that might be...
Might help.
Might help, yeah.
One other thought, if this evolves into a downtown area...
I'd do it.
Parking will be at a premium, and to the degree that other parcels have to allocate square footage to parking, that will reduce the amount of taxable value created from parcels. It might be worth considering, is it worth having a municipal ramp, or the option for a ramp on this site, if we could charge other properties for use of that ramp in their parking calculation?
That parking lot could become a ramp in the future, if and when that became a need. One of the reasons with this design, too, is recognizing that if with expansion we have a greater need, we have space on this property in order to increase our capabilities and capacity. So kind of like, leaves us like a...
You probably wouldn't want to look at that before that develops, but as, if, or when that develops.
Available.
Depending on how it develops.
Because I'm not sure if we could accommodate that.
Definitely, yes, we're looking into it.
Great job, you guys.
For sure.
Anything else?
No, I think of your time, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else from council, any questions? That, can I get a motion to adjourn?
I still move.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.